Thank you. Um, welcome to the Provo City Planning Commission meeting. Um, this is Wednesday, September 22nd and we are starting at 6:03 a.m. Um, I would like to invite the other commissioners to state their names and um whether or not they have any um conflicts. Commissioner Jensen?
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
And I'm Laurie Urquiaaga and I have no conflicts. All right, we have only uh one item on our agenda today. Um, and I'll go ahead and read that in and then turn the time over to Dustin for the staff um presentation. Dudley and Associates request project plan approval for reuse of commercial buildings located at 5600 North University Avenue with additional parking and landscaping in the general commer- general commercial zone, River Bottoms neighborhood. Um, and this is a is an item on which we have the um final action. So we will approve or disapprove, not um recommend. Okay, um Dustin?
Alright, thank you. So yeah, a few months back, we uh reviewed this site, um 5600 North University Avenue. Uh, at that time, it was the concept plan application and a rezone application. And uh from that, uh the the planning commission, you know, uh recommended approval on the rezone and and approved the concept plan. And I'll just kinda refresh on on some of that from the concept plan and and talk about what's uh changed with the project plan here. So the site kind of overlaid here, those existing, um as you see here, we have the existing buildings there. Um, those won't change as far as their location, they're just gonna be uh updated cosmetically and and on the inside as well and be repurposed uh for commercial retail use. Uh, so the applicant has gone to the designer view uh committee and gotten approval for their design concept to uh kind of reskin these existing buildings and make them more attractive and and the project plan here will improve the site, uh adding landscaping and parking for this, for the new proposed uh commercial uses. The property around those kinda oriented oriented as far as zoning goes, so to the um to the north, that's Orem City. Um, that property there is zoned for commercial use, the property to the east across University Avenue and also to the south is agricultural. And to the west, that is zoned for research and business park. Um, the applicant is also proposing to add some pad sites uh here and here on the property in addition to those existing uh structures. So parking for this site, the required parking count is 124 parking stalls to serve the the restaurant and the uh or the restaurants and the and the commercial uses. Um, they are providing 126 parking spaces, so parking minimum requirements are are met with this project. the trail between University Avenue and and the development here as part of their agreement is that they will maintain and and improve the trail system uh running along the east side of the property. So that trail will build to be improved and maintained as part of their uh commitment for that. Uh, also, they're improving uh landscaping and and pathways along the Provo River on the west side of the development, so that will be an added amenity uh for this area. As far as the structures go, the setback uh along University Avenue's non-conforming is to today's current standard. Um, but those uh setbacks, you know, since the buildings are already there, uh are met. Uh, that's as we view those as non-conforming structures. Um, so staff has reviewed it and finds that it will meet all the other zoning requirements for the general commercial zone. Um, staff has a few or I guess another thing too, and from the concept plan application, they originally had a a drive access closer to the intersection of University Avenue and 5600 North. Uh, the response from from that hearing was that that should be moved farther away or further away from the intersection to to help uh limit any impacts that would have. So as you can see here, they've moved the driveway or access point uh farther to the west to get away from that conflict at the intersection there. So that's an improvement uh from when we've seen it last at the concept plan approval. Staff's recommendation for this is to approve it uh with with two conditions. The first is from the rezone, there was a development agreement that still needs to be uh finalized. And so that the first condition is that that development agreement for the rezone is recorded so that the rezoning of the property will will take place. Everything else is in place for that. The second recommendation from staff is that all the remaining CRC comments are addressed and CRC approval is received. Um, if there's any questions you have for me, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, before we start on that, I would like to invite Commissioner Jones to introduce herself and state whether she has any conflicts.
Commissioner Jones or Ally Jones, no conflict.
Thank you. Okay, um commissioners, do we have any questions for Dustin? Um, Commissioner Jensen?
Um, I had a few questions. The parking, I noticed, doesn't meet our current um standards with the the trees in the in the middle of the parking lot. And then as a side note to that comment, I noticed that as soon as it enters the Orem area, there's no parking landscaping at all. So I thought that was interesting, that they were not gonna worry about that on the north end. But I thought we, I thought they had to have um trees all throughout their parking in the new landscaping requirements. So if you could help with that?
And so that's one of the comments from from staff for the CRC review is that they add those uh parking islands to that with the Orem parking. Um, same thing would be expected there for the part that's required. I think they're providing additional parking on the Orem piece that's exceeding what is needed for this development. And so we wouldn't necessarily make Provo standards apply to those, but for the required parking that's on the Orem piece will will make sure that those are added.
At least, at least the Provo portion will be in compliance. Um, along with that, can the ratio of restaurant to retail change after this is approved? Because I know that they have their parking numbers based on that, what was it, 3,000 and 1,000 um in each building around that. So what if they decide they want more retail or they want more restaurant and that would change the parking standards, but we have already assessed, got it in. How does that get addressed?
Um, yeah, I mean, that's a, that's something that can happen on any project we see. Typically, when a project comes in, we'll review it for what they're proposing. Um, but yeah, any listed use in that zone could be what they uh based that off of, but typically the parking's generally gonna be somewhat the same uh for that. But yeah, if there's uh parking issues, they'll have to resolve those. Uh, when a new tenant goes in, they've gotta get a new business license and that also is gonna get
Oh, okay. So there is, there is some sort of a catch basin for that. Um, my last question for you is, um, when we saw this last time, the reason we had to review it was because that existing structure was closer than 100 feet to the river. And I noticed in this plan that future pad site they have in the bottom southwest corner seems to be even closer to the river than the original building was. So I know that's not something that's gonna get approved tonight in our discussion, but I just wanted to point that out, that if I'm looking at this map and understanding it correctly, that pad site looks like it wouldn't be able to be constructed there. That little square one in the bottom left corner?
Okay, yeah, we can take a closer look at that as well as staff, but uh
so that building is not being approv- approved at this point. And just for planning commission information, there is a pending application in to reduce the river setback in this area by another property owner, not by this one. Staff is supportive of that reduction. You're gonna see that application come in. If that gets approved by the city council, this, that pad that you're looking at probably would meet that setback.
Okay, I just wanted to point that out. It's not something that affects tonight's decision, but something that people would wanna be aware of. Okay, that's all the questions I have for Mr. Wright. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other commissioners with questions?
See, it seems like last time when we talked about it, that the road on the east, where they go from one parking lot on the south to the parking lot on the north, it was you, it was owned by Utah County? Have they gone through all of the things with Utah County and worked it all out?
A- as far as we've been told, yes. We're waiting for that official document, but they say they have it. Uh, I suppose they do. So we'll, we'll get that in the
Other questions? All right, well, then we will invite um the applicant to make their presentation.
Hi, uh, this is Suzanne. Um, I don't really think there's anything for me to say, you can kind of see it all there. Yes, I do have a deed from Utah County for the land on the east side of the building. Um, I can uh provide that to Mr. Pepperoni and uh that's about it, it kind of speaks for itself.
Okay, I have a question um about the internal structure. Um, if I understand those floor plans, the dashed lines are partitions and it looks like you could be partitioning areas that don't have access to bathrooms. And I was wondering about that.
Um, no, that's actually, that will fall under the permitting process. Uh, we've done seismic upgrades, these are schematics. Um, the bathrooms have taken on a different uh location since then, but every space will have access to a bathroom.
Okay, um, I figured that was necessary, but I wasn't sure how that was going to happen. Um, commissioners, do we have additional questions for Suzanne? Uh, Commissioner Jensen?
I wanted to know if both of the buildings have the same basic floor plan. I couldn't see one, actually, I can't read what it says, so I'm not sure which one's which. Is there only one of them with the, with the structures on the top? Or are they both exactly the same?
It, there's no second floor on either building.
What, in the facade, the elevations picture, it looks like there's like a little, I don't know if it's just an architectural tower or something on it?
Do you wanna bring those up so I can see it?
It's page seven of the staff report that.
It, it's not a tower, it's actually a, uh, oh, that on that one.
Yeah.
Uh, those are just structures to hide the HVAC units.
Okay, so it'll, it'll be something that you can see from the side and it will enhance the facade, but they're not inhabited.
Yes, and actually, the facade is much nicer looking than this as it goes through iterations, so.
I just, I liked that, so I wanted to make sure I was understanding it correctly. And if both of them have it, I think that will be a nice improvement, so thank you.
Well, um, no, let me clarify, because the west building that you're looking at here is really a prefab metal warehouse. And the east building is a block building that is um flat on the roof. So we're dealing with two completely different types of structures. On the east building, we've put a curb slash parapet wall up to direct water and snow into drains that sit in the center of the roof. They're in existence now, we're just enlarging and replacing those. So you're really dealing with two completely different types of structures. So they will match in color and the windows and styles, so to speak, by the time we're finished, but they are different in structure.
Will they both, but they'll both still have that facade addition to them, so they'll, they'll go together like you were saying?
Yes, yes.
Awesome, that looks like a nice thing you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Other commissioners? Okay, um, then is, do we have any neighborhood commenters, is the um neighborhood chair here, Rachel?
I am not sure if, we do have one call-in listener, but I'm not sure if it's the neighborhood chair or not.
Okay.
Let me see if they raise their hand to say that they wanna make a comment. I'm not seeing a hand being raised, so they might not be wanting to make a comment. Let me just double check caller with the last three numbers, 394. Are you wanting to make a comment at this time?
All right, well, let's, oh, oh, here we go.
I'm, I'm here. This is Dave Rosen, I'm the River Bottoms neighborhood chair and I would like to make a comment tonight.
Thank you.
We have had various meetings, uh Zoom meetings and other meetings on this particular project of the neighborhood. The neighborhood is in favor of the project. It does away with an eyesore that's been there for some time. We're excited about the upgrade and the development that will bring in people to that part of the neighborhood. We think it will be a nice entrance as people come in and we're expecting further development on the parcels around it as uh Mr. Pepperoni indicated, there are some additional uh requests coming that should enhance this piece as well as the other pieces. So we are in favor, thank you.
Thank you. Um, before you hang up, um, do any of the commissioners have questions for Mr. Rosen? I'm not seeing any hands up, so I think that's that's great, thank you for um providing that comment, um, and that context. And I think we need to leave it open for 30 seconds or so for anyone else to maybe dial in who would be interested and then we can close the com- public comment. We will leave it open for 30 seconds.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other callers at this time.
Thank you. We are, we'll then close the public comments and invite um the commissioners to discuss any concerns, comments they might have in regards to this project. While we're waiting to see if anybody else wants to jump in, I will say that um I have driven past this area I don't know how many hundreds of times um since I've been living in the area and it is really an eyesore. So I am very pleased to see that this um is going to be upgraded and um reoccupied. Um, I think it'll be a good addition to um University Avenue. Other commissioner comments? Commissioner Jensen?
I just wanted you to know, I agree. I think this will be great and um with the conditions proposed by, in the staff report, I would feel comfortable recommending it for approval.
Okay. Um.
I guess I should say not recommending it, but approving it.
Yes. If there's no more discussion, I would um invite a motion? Commissioner Jensen?
I would like to make a motion that we approve this project plan for the reuse of commercial buildings located at 5600 North University Avenue with additional parking and landscaping in the general commercial zone in the River Bottoms neighborhood. Um, with the conditions that the development agreement from the rezone is recorded and the remaining comments from the CRC are addressed and approved.
Thank you, do we have a second?
All second.
Um, seconded by Commissioner Knudsen. Um, any discussion on the motion? Uh, seeing none, I will call the roll. Um, Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Aye.
Um, Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so the motion carries um five to zero. I think this is going to be the world record for the shortest planning commission meeting ever. Um, do we have any other discussion items from commissioners? And if not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion, adjourn.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I as, but I as well. Um, we will see everybody in a couple of weeks.
Thanks, Laurie.
Okay, thank you. Bye.
Thank you, everyone.